I call the Tuesday, July 24, 2018, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And tonight we'll have our invocation given by Reverend Peter Grana, Redeemer Lutheran Church. And I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand for the invocation, after which Councilman Bill Moody will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious God, I ask you to bestill upon these men and women who you have ordained to serve, make laws and set policy for the city of Portsmouth to be compassionate and to be fair and to be all that brings glory to your name. I ask you, Father, to bless the men and women who serve our community as employees in their chosen vocations, keep them safe as they serve us. And finally, Father, to the citizens of this city, give us a spirit of cooperation and of appreciation. Help us to show our gratitude to the men and women that serve us and make our lives better. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
[inaudible]
Please indicate your presence by hitting the yes button. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have the consideration of the adoption approval of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of July 9, 2018. We have the minutes of a call meeting of July 10, 2018. And we have the minutes of a regular meeting of July 10, 2018. Is there a motion to approve, move adoption?
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. The second was Councilman Smith. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to presentation, and Councilman Moody will present lapel pins to our newly appointed boards and commission members. And Madam Clerk, do you have a list of those?
Yes, sir.
And accompanied by Councilman Smith.
With the following persons, please come forward. Downtown Design Committee Jeffrey Butts, Social Services Advisory Commission Gracie Bowers, Wetlands Board Patrick Golds.
While Councilman Smith is distributing the lapel pins, let's give it up for these On behalf of council, I want to express our appreciation for your volunteerism. You know what the pay is. You knew going in that it was zero, which makes it even more important and says so much about each of you that you're willing to roll your sleeves up and work hard to make our city a better place to live, work, and play. You know, the work that you do will be absolutely essential. If you've been watching any of our work sessions and council meetings, you know there's a lot going on. We're working very hard to improve our city, as I said, to make it a better place, to attract businesses and more citizens to come here. So, once again, appreciate it. And since we have a small group, I will pass the mic to one of you that might want to say a few words.[288.61][288.61](laughter) The men have nominated the lady.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gracie Bowers. I'm a long-term citizen of the city of Portsmouth. I retired from social services after 27 years. I'm also a recent retiree for the Portsmouth Public School System and a member, a very active member of my sorority. And our focus is always service to the community. So I'm happy to give back. And we're used to not getting paid.[322.27][322.27](laughter)
Thank you, guys, for being present. My name is Jeffrey Butts. I recently was appointed to the Downtown Design Committee of Portsmouth. I practice architecture, so I really am very interested in looking at the future of our city of Portsmouth's architecture and urban development and all the amazing things that come with that. So I enjoy this opportunity.
Thank you. I've lived in the city for 23 years. I've taken its governance and its services for granted. Life has been very good to me, and I'm at that stage where I'm looking for a chance to give something back. And I appreciate this opportunity.
Very good.[366.13][366.13](applause)
Thank you very much.[372.78][372.78](laughter)
Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol, please, for speakers?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of your five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. This brings us to unfinished business, and this is item 18-263. And the first item is item A. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend subsection 40.1-4.5 of chapter 40.1 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, for the purpose of permitting the operation of food trucks in conjunction with a microbrewery or micro-distillery.
So that we can consider this matter as a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second. We have a motion to adopt, and we do have one speaker, and that is Mark Kadogieatroski. And, sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens in the broadest I'm going to speak on what you've expressed an intent to do with this because I want to call to your attention that there is a deviance in terms of how you are using the motion to table and how that motion is actually defined within Robert's Rules of Order. I've looked at it online. I have my own copy, but it's 10th edition as opposed to the 12th. But the online edition is still in congruence with the 10th. So let me tell you my interpretation, which, of course, is not binding on you, but it may advise...
Does this germane to what we're considering?
It is, sir.
We have a motion to...
It is germane to the action that you plan to take. So...
Sir, we have a motion to adopt. That's what's on the table.
Yes, sir, and there will be a motion to table to follow. I don't get to speak after you've moved to table it. The motion to lay on the table is... The motion to lay on the table is to be used for a temporary set aside of something you will take up later, generally for some sort of emergency or for some sort of exigency. For example, if one of you had a plane to catch and you were going to leave the meeting early, and so there was a higher priority item of business that you wanted to shift to the front of the agenda. The proper use of "to lay on the table" would be to set this item aside so you could pick up the more urgent matter, deal with it, and then the council member could go on to other things. The appropriate motion, according to Robert's Rules, would be to defer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the motion, which is to adopt this ordinance? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, this motion passes, which brings us to item 18-263B. And would you read the caption of the resolution, please?
A resolution granting a use permit to PI Tower Development LLC to construct and operate a 150-foot monopole telecommunications tower and fenced equipment compound at 2015 Columbia Street, tax map 0169-0860.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt.
Second. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. And is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ready for the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18-195, which is the consideration of an ordinance that was tabled so that we can consider this to this meeting. Is there a motion to remove this item from the table?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to remove it from the table. It's been seconded. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And now this matter is before us. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Ordinance granting the request of Robert C. Barclay, IV Esquire, on behalf of WP2 LLC, requesting a proffered rezoning of 303 Bedford Court. The property is currently zoned general residential GR. The proposed zoning is conditional light industrial ILK. The comprehensive plan designates the property as part of the mixed-use corridor, Z1801.
Okay. And is that the caption of the ordinance?
Yes.
If you could read the caption, please.
That the portion of the zoning map attached to and make a part of the City of Portsmouth zoning ordinance, which now zones as GR, general residential, the property described in petition for zoning amendment number Z1801, is hereby amended and changed so as to show said property zoned as ILK, light industrial conditional, and that the said property is hereby zoned as ILK, light industrial conditional.
Thank you. Sir, a motion on this matter, so we can consider it?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt. It has been duly seconded. We're ready for discussion, and we do have registered speakers. And the first speaker is Pamela Phillips. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Hi. My name is Pamela Phillips. I live in the Parkview area of town. The reason why I wanted to talk with you is I've actually met with the members and the residents of Portsmouth Acres a few times at this point, and I'm against rezoning this particular parcel of land. A lot of it has to do with the fact that this is the entrance into the residence. The only thing that's being thrown out as far as a potential use for this particular piece of property is the potential of a convenience store with gasoline pumps. To my knowledge, there's been no disclosure as to whether or not that's actually the plan, whether the property has been sold with that intent. And to get into it, we're talking about .9 acres. That's not a corner lot, that the city actually owns the adjacent sliver of land that, before it goes into the railroad tracks and crosses over into the industrial park. So we're talking about a very small parcel, which would be more in conjunction with the residences that are there, to keep it as a residential piece of property. For it to be transferred over into light industrial actually changes how that property will be laid out according to city zoning and development of that particular parcel as to do with screening that will be required to keep it so that the residences that are right there adjacent to it are not visible to that piece of property. According to city code, to go from industrial to residential, you need a D-type screening, which is actually considered opaque. For the exact line, it's Table 40 dot 1, DAC 5 dot 2 in city code. So that actually means that the back perimeter and part of the side of this property will need to have a tree canopy installed, which actually reduces the amount of usable property for someone to come in and develop it according to this particular ordinance and zoning category. The same is the fact that when you go from residential to mixed use, the zoning isn't... The screening requirement isn't exactly... Is nowhere near to the degree of this one. But we're talking about cutting down 20 feet off the back perimeter that has to... That will essentially have tree coverings. So we've just reduced the size of this lot to even smaller. And what are we really going to find that can go on there that's going to be an asset to the community? Stick with what is currently there and be an enhance to that community. So please keep this particular parcel general residential. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Steve Carroll, and, sir, you have five minutes.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. In the weeks that this rezoning request has been factually and passionately protested by myself, others, and the residents of Portsmouth Acres, five members of council have overruled the recommendation of their own planning commission, as well as ignoring the unanimous rejection of Z1801 by the zoning board for what is obviously an over-the-top zoning request from residential to light industrial. And yet, not one of you has put forward a justification or rationalization for this. Not one of you. 11 years ago, this applicant persisted in an unwanted and non-conforming rezoning called Z0701. This current application is even more egregious than that one. And three of you, Mr. Moody, Mr. Smith, and Mrs. Simmons, were on council then. You know how sensitive this community is to its safety and security. This applicant's forte is large-scale, high-profit projects, which Z1801 is not. When a magician prominently displays his right hand, he does so to distract us from what's going on with his left hand. The applicant stood at this podium and implied that he waited 15 years for the phone to ring on this piece of property. For a convenience store? Sorry, that dog doesn't hunt. Let's briefly examine the merits of this application. Next to Alexander's Corner, this proposed site is one of the most dangerous, accident-prone intersections in Portsmouth. Rush-hour traffic and long train lines routinely cross Greenwood and will certainly aggravate access and egress to any business on this site, and that's an inexplicable business decision. Shortcutters dodging the current traffic problems recklessly zip through Portsmouth Acres, imperiling the residents and schoolchildren. And we can say even less for the economics. How many Portsmouth businesses have been lost or will be lost to excess capacity, crime, and poor policy? Another convenience store here will surely put at least one and probably two similar business out of businesses. So you're telling us that you, five of you, are telling us that you're going to accept the sacrifice of two good businesses in hand for one in the bush? That's not economic development. That is illogical. Would it not serve Portsmouth's economic goals better by expending energy developing the hundreds of empty acres around the old Fairwood Homes, rather than delegitimizing the homeowners of Portsmouth Acres? There is valid suspicion that the true motive here is not the development of this site, but to set a precedent that would propagate like dominoes the destruction of Portsmouth Acres as a residential entity and pave the way for commercialization in this area, as was attempted 11 years ago. This would not only encourage similar rezoning requests in the future, but provide a legal precedent. And it cannot be overstated that the applicant's business headquarters is in the adjacent park immediately adjacent to Portsmouth Acres. Thanks in large part to Johnny Joano, cities can no longer take private property for economic development. Is the new tactic in Portsmouth now to zone and tax people out of their homes for economic Mrs. Simmons, you left a nice home in Churchland in a very nice neighborhood to move to Old Town. I presume you did so to improve your quality of life. Why would you vote to inflict a lower quality of life on an entire community that you would not accept yourself? How about you, Mr. Smith, Mr. Moody, Mrs. Burke, Mr. Clark? All those in attendance tonight, if you're a disapprove of the way this community is being treated, would you please stand? People have spoken. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Wayne Willis, and, sir, you have five minutes.
I'm Wayne Willis, president of Portsmouth Acres Civic League, and I would like to thank you all for letting us speak at the last appearance that we were here. And you didn't have to do that. We appreciate that. And I'd like to bring up again some of the things we've already said before, but I think it embarrassed us saying it again. Said, we've made known many of our concerns in opposition of rezoning to 303 Bedford Court. And some of you agree with what we say, that it will produce a negative effect on our community. But others on council seem to disagree about any negative impact that it might have. And they seem to be of a mindset that it's more important for the city to have a business on the site as a lucrative financial provider, rather than a single-family houses on site as current zoning currently is. Now, families are really important. I'd like for all of you to think about that. If this rezoning is approved, regardless of the aftermath of unforeseen problems that are sure to unfold, and ownership has changed and all is completed and approved by perhaps even the same inspectors that gave the final approval for the improper drainage grading causing flooding on Lee Dale Avenue, which problem did not exist before the new houses were built on Bedford Court. And they were approved by the council as well. And the city recently cleaned the ditch, but the flooding remains. And as we were told, we threw trash in the ditch and such as that, and all that's untrue. We... It's been cleaned, but it's still not working. Water cannot run uphill. And if we send a blind man out there, you could see that. But I don't know why that... When they came out to inspect it, apparently whoever looked at it said, "Oh, that's a nice sidewalk." Yeah, that's nothing wrong with that. So we complained, and that's what they said to us, that it was nothing wrong with it. So we get caught up in it, and it said that it causes water to pond at the end of their sidewalk that they put there. And our community will have to suffer the consequences without any recourse. We hope that council may be able to see the reason for our fears. The same fears may become realities again. We ask that you all earnestly consider which is most important for our city. Will you vote for approval in the name of progress for the city of Portsmouth, or will you vote for the preservation of the people of Portsmouth Acres community? Why should anyone believe that approval of this application will not damage the integrity of Portsmouth Acres community? The problems of traffic, drainage, noise, bright lights, and crime are all certain to increase regardless of whatever type of business that could be placed there, which, as I understand it, is a choice of different businesses, could be as many as 62 on the site. So we were a community there before any of this ever started. We were a community in Norfolk County even before the city of Portsmouth annexed us in 1960. Why must it be changed now? We need two more votes, providing that the same two voted for us the first time would vote for us this time. We need two more votes to keep us alive, so that it helps preserve our Portsmouth Acres neighborhood. How many more of these improvements can we endure? We're a very small community fighting against a very large corporation. We ask you to please to deny this motion and help our community and leave it as it is currently. And I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mark Kadogieatroski, and, sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. I've spoken on this matter each time that it's come before you all over the past several weeks. And each time that I speak, I try to touch on different points. But I do want to underscore something that Mr. Carroll said when he was standing here about the preponderance of opinion that is in opposition to this proposal. Your planning commission and every citizen other than the spokesperson for the applicant has been opposed to this. So you, as representatives of the community, I would expect that this would have some impact on you because the majority vote, the last time there was a vote at the first reading, was completely contrary to the community that you are sworn to represent. Moving to another piece of this, this particular application, I was interested to note in the previous item, the one you approved before... previous item, the one you approved before taking this one up, it was a general mixed-use application. And so between general residential, which is the current zoning for the property in question, and light industrial, there is a designation general mixed-use. As part of the resolution that you adopted by your vote, there were certain considerations that had to be assessed in terms of approving that particular item. It's interesting that light industrial doesn't have the same ones, yet there's a greater variance between the original zoning and that. And these considerations certainly should apply to a rezoning. They are, complies with the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is consistent with a comprehensive plan, is compatible with the character of surrounding lands and the uses permitted in the zoning districts of surrounding lands, is configured to minimize adverse effects, including the visual impacts of the proposed use on adjacent lands, maintains safe and adequate egress and ingress onto the site and safe road conditions around the site, allows for the protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning districts. Well, I would say it fails on every one of those considerations, and I think that is something that you should be giving weight to as well in terms of upzoning this property from its current use. But as I have said before, when you tear the corner off a neighborhood, you are making the remaining properties vulnerable to the same sort of zoning change that you opposed on that corner. And so what Mr. Carroll said about rezoning by changing the character as opposed to the old eminent domain appears to be where you're headed. The next application who comes along, the next person who buys a property in Portsmouth Acres and decides that he wants to cite the precedent that you set with this light industrial rezoning will have something to argue in court if you deny it. So I ask you not to open that door and not to endanger this neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is John Perea, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council and residents of Portsmouth. My name is John Perea. I live at the property at 300 Bedford Court, directly across the street from this rezoning that's being requested. When I purchased my home, there was a house there, okay? And I, my family and myself, we liked it like a neighborhood. I've lived in Portsmouth since 1980. I lived here prior in the '70s, but I can remember Portsmouth, and I appreciate you all trying to rejuvenate Portsmouth. We each have every new car dealership you can think of, and businesses in Portsmouth don't always make it. Farm Fresh, for instance, Victory Crossing, has been closed down, where its location was across the street on Airline. Most of the strip stores we see now, strip malls, whatever, they all have cash for title loans or nail place or hair place. And who's to say that if they put something across the street from my home that they sell a year or two later and something else goes in there? I mean, what's happening? I don't think that one piece of property is actually going to rejuvenate Portsmouth and get revenue that would bring us back, okay? I'm really kind of at wit's end here. I mean, this is my home. This is where I live. It's the most expensive investment anybody can make in their life is to buy a home, okay? And this is my home. It's our home. All my neighbors and such. I mean, I work every day trying to get money to provide for my family and put a roof over my head, and all y'all do as well. And I don't want to look out my front door every day and see something like this or have lights in my eyes or air conditioning units or refrigeration units going on. I'm at wit's end, and I know everybody's place here is to provide a living for everybody and make a profit is a nice thing to happen, but not at expense of all the residents of Portsmouth Acres. I mean, we're reaching out to you to please take it in your hearts and consider our situation, you know? These are our homes, our families. We raise people there. I mean, this is what's happening, and I really hope you all reconsider, and we get two more votes against this. And thank you for letting me speak tonight, and thank you for coming out.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and of course, the citizens. My name is Teresa Lynn Willis-Napp. I reside in Portsmouth Acres, right across the street from Mr. Perea, and we're the second most impacted by the proposed rezoning. And I believe, I believe that we've presented a logical case for denial of Z-1801. When I last spoke on this, Dr. Whitaker made sure and cleared up that I was correct. All uses I spoke of are possible with this proposed zoning, be it by right, use permit, or conditions. I wanted to be sure to clarify this. There are loopholes to our neighborhood's detriment, unfortunately. Also, I'm sorry, I lost my face. Also, if you do this, it creates a property flip precedence, which will be a detriment to the entire city. This will have long-lasting effects all over the city, and in many cases, I believe it will be a negative impact. And I thank you for your time, and I ask you to please deny Z-1801. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And our next speaker is Donna South, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna South. I'm a former resident of Portsmouth Acres. My parents still live in that neighborhood. I currently live in the Churchland area. I am currently a teacher for Portsmouth Public Schools. I work at the high school right down the street from the area, Wilson, right where I graduated from. I take a whole lot of pride in Portsmouth. As an aspiring business owner as well, I know how important it is to bring businesses to Portsmouth, but not right there, not in that space, because it brings so many, as everybody has said, so many safety issues, so many, so many safety issues, call it what it is, you know? My parents still live in that area, and I worry about them, you know? They're the reason why I moved back to this area. I was in South Carolina, and I love my parents. Most people do. But I worry about them, and I just feel like this is one thing that could give me a little peace of mind, you know? I don't live with them right now. My mom was over there, but I, it could give me a little peace of mind knowing that they're safe, you know? They don't have to deal with extra traffic or, you know, if they put a store there and getting robbed and the person runs into the neighborhood like what happened a couple, a few weeks ago at Speedway. I feel like it would give us some peace of mind if we knew that we, that whatever's going to happen to this piece of land will be something to benefit this neighborhood, you know? This person who owns this part of Portsmouth Acres, what does he have invested in our neighborhood? What does he have invested besides money? And, you know, I feel like maybe if he had, maybe if he had a home in Portsmouth Acres, he could see how valuable Portsmouth Acres is. He could see how safe it is. A house, my sister and her husband bought a house in the same neighborhood because they knew it was safe. They knew it was safe. And now we have this period of ambiguity, this space where we don't know what's going to happen. We just don't know. So thank you for your time. I'm asking you guys to vote no, you know, for my parents, you know, not for my parents, if it were your parents, and it were you who couldn't be by your parents, you know, and seeing them every day, but you knew their neighborhood is safe. That's one less thing I have to think about. So vote no, please. Have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker is Dorothy Flowers, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
I don't know. Can y'all hear me? Hello? My name's Dorothy Flowers, and I'm a resident of Portsmouth Acres. I'm here today once again to ask y'all to vote no, or some of y'all to at least change your votes. I don't know what we can say. You've heard about the flood and the problems, the traffic. I don't understand the rezoning of this, why it's this particular. Whitaker mentioned the last, Councilman Whitaker, sorry, mentioned the last time that under this zoning, there would be certain permits he wouldn't have to come down here and get, that he could build something, and we don't have no, he's offered convenience, but he also offered how many other businesses there. You know, how can you grant a permit and not know exactly what the intent has been in there? I understand him purchasing his property and hoping someday, you know, he can re-flip it and become a multimillion-dollar piece of property. Heck, I'd like to own a piece myself, you know? But at the same time, sometimes money ain't all about money. It's about life. I got grandkids that live there. You know, I'm raising grandchildren. Other people have children there. We have safety of the elderly. Look over here and look at us. I myself is getting up there in years, and I don't want to have to be worried about some car flying down the street, and they do. Y'all have a sign up there, and it ain't stopping, and it's only going to get worse if you put a business on that corner. The other thing, I don't know if y'all walked and looked at that property, but y'all have some city boxes. When I called, they told me it was, I thought it was a camera, but they're saying it's something to do with the lights going off and on on that whole corner. Are y'all going to have to relocate that to put a business there? You know, how much money is it going to cost the city in the long run for some little revenue or taxes? I've worked in this state, in this state and this city since I was 16 years old in many businesses, and I know when it comes to tax times, a lot of them have ways of not paying any taxes. So do you honestly think this one's going to be any different? The employees are going to be paying the state and federal taxes, but I don't think the businesses. So think about that. Outweigh it. One time, let the money not be an issue here. Let the quality of the way of life remain in one part of this city where you ain't got 911 being called every other day because we got a crime going on, you know? That could change. It's also going to change, if you think about that, that's on that corner. When you hit that overpass, if somebody did rob a business that was there and they cross over those railroad tracks, you're in Chesapeake. Depending on which way you go on the interstate, you're messing with state. So you could tie up three or four different police departments chasing one person. Think about that. You may be up there needing that person, but he's too busy chasing someone in Portsmouth because y'all put a business there. Just say no. Let the man go across the water, or there's all kinds of undeveloped land on the other side of Cavalier Manor, you know, there's all kinds of places. Let him go develop his business. Let this remain, you know, or at least change the zoning to where he has to come down here and answer to y'all for what he puts there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is John Blunt Jr., and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. The last time we sit there and we talked about this matter, I poured my heart out to each and every one of you in regards to my family, my job, my business. Last time I stood here, I told you all the things that could possibly happen, and I told you all the things that I perceive could possibly happen if a business is in there. Dr. Patton, you have a few moments, please? Thank you. Everyone here at our neighborhood has done everything in their power to express how concerned we are about this whole ordeal. And I, for one, though, have time and time again, though, tried to project what this type of environment would produce to our neighborhood, to our quality of life. I'll give you a quick story. I've got a few minutes. January the 4th was my, I mean, July the 4th was my sister's birthday. My mother, all my sisters, kids, grandkids, great-grandkids came over to my house. We barbecued, played in the pool, ran around the yard and everything else. Afterwards, we had a little bit of fireworks and sparkles out in the middle of the street, though. We had a great time. That night, it rained, a little bit, but it was just enough, though, to water the grass. July the 5th, I woke up, 6:00 AM like always, throwing my badge, went to work down here at the Portsmouth Hospital, the Naval Hospital. 10 o'clock in the morning, I get a phone call from my wife. "Jay, there's a fire out in front of our house." I'm getting the kids together. We're putting our clothes on. We're leaving the neighborhood. I ran to the window, and remember, I'm downtown. I'm like 10 minutes away. There is plumes of smoke that's going up 300 feet into the air. If anybody does not know where Portsmouth Acres is, on July the 5th, that was Portsmouth Acres. I could not go home that night after working 12 hours because there is smoke and there is fire in my neighborhood. It was not a house on fire. It wasn't a bunch of kids playing with actual matches. It was a business on fire next to my neighborhood. Now, if you could think to yourself for just a moment what could have happened if there was a gas pump in my neighborhood, if there was some explosive or possible explosive matter in my neighborhood, how would this conversation be happening right now? Would I be standing here? Would my family be standing here if there was a gas pump in my neighborhood and there was fire burning for over six hours in my neighborhood? Yes, I am angry. Yes, I am still wary at the fact that you all cannot understand how dangerous this is to put business near a residential neighborhood. What do I have to say? What do we have to say that will convince you at this very moment that it is a danger to our lives? It's a danger to our families. It is a danger for us to wake up in the morning and go to work. How many of you have came to work and heard the call and cries of your children as your wife is scrambling to get them out of a burning neighborhood? Anyone in this building can tell me that they've had that phone call and then go back to work thinking about that for the rest of the day. Baby, I'll meet you at your sister's house in Virginia Beach because I can't go home. I can't lay in my bed. I can't go and cut my grass. I got to go and console my children and explain to them why our- I gotta go and console my children and explain to them why our neighborhood is on fire and it's not a single house with even a spark on it. There is a neighborhood that is sitting there, that is on the mercy of a fire that was made by a business that was probably poorly sanctioned of safety, of regulations, of policies. Someone's smoking near something that caught fire and it's next to my neighborhood. By God's grace, it rained that night. By God's grace, that fire didn't loom to a certain direction. If you look at Portsmouth Acres, if you ever get a moment, we are completely surrounded by wildlife. It is greenery around the entire neighborhood. Yes, the entire neighborhood. Now, if you've never seen what a brush fire looks like, I'm from the country. I know what it looks like. If you have, you don't have an idea of it, though, look on the news about the West Coast. That's what wildfires start. That's how they keep going. Because of dry brush, excuse me, Mr. Ashby, could I borrow your attention for just a moment? I'm pouring my heart out here to you. If there's something more important, please just give me 30 seconds. This is my family. This is my neighborhood. And I would like to have each and every one of yours' attention.
Please direct your comments to the council.
Council members, this is a serious matter. I'm angry because there is a situation that we've been pouring our house over, over months now. It's months now. So many people don't come off of work at 6:00 at night to sit over here and worry.
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Wright. And sir, you have five minutes. So, you don't want to speak?
Yes, question.
Wait. The next speaker is Jerry Willis. And sir, you have five minutes.
Mayor, council, thank you for letting me speak with you tonight. And I want to let you know, well, you've heard from our neighborhood already. And I agree with what they had to say. And would you please think what you would do if it was your neighborhood that was in this very position? Like, okay, you got a nice neighborhood, you're happy with your neighborhood, you like the neighborhood the way it is. But, you know, someone's got a piece of property here and he wants to get it rezoned so he can make more money and all that kind of stuff, that's all well and good. But what happens with the neighborhood? Well, we don't know what's gonna happen with our neighborhood. And we would try, like to, preserve what we have. We don't see where our neighborhood needs this so-called improvement because we know that it's gonna have to make a change in our neighborhood. It cannot go in, be rezoned, a business put in there, and our neighborhood stay the same. It's just not possible for our neighborhood to stay exactly the same as it is now with a business being placed in there. It's not possible. And our neighborhood is a nice little neighborhood, nothing fancy about it, but we like it. We would like to keep it the way it is. You know, I have said this before, I'll say it again, that, you know, money is not everything. Don't just see your dollar bills. There's people here involved that it is definitely gonna change their way of life if this is changed. Your planning commission gave you their recommendation, you should follow it. This could be bad planning. Besides being bothered with us, this could happen anywhere in the city and this could be going on and on and on again. It could be a bad practice, bad planning if you do let this rezoning go through. And we believe in the neighborhood that it's best to leave this as residential, build something residential there. And the applicant, he can still make some money. He won't make the money he wants to make. And the city won't make the taxes they'd like to make, but there will still be some money there. But it certainly wouldn't change the neighborhood like rezoning would change the neighborhood. And so, with that in mind, we please ask you to just think how you would be, how your community would be if you was in our position with this being basically forced on you. And so, just think about that. Not just money, but think about how it would be for you, your family, your neighborhood if this was happening to your neighborhood, to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And the chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, I'm gonna be voting against the applicant and, once again, standing with the residents on this issue. I do have a question for the city manager, Dr. Patton, if you would allow Mr. Baldwin to come and speak.
Yes, Mr. Baldwin, our planning director for the mayor's will come forward.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Baldwin, just to make sure clear on the history of this whole issue, there was an application that was submitted requesting that the property be rezoned from general residential to conditional light industrial.
That's correct.
That applicant was denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Went through the planning commission, did not go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, because I received an email from the chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals stating that it was denied and on the same day it went before the planning commission and it was also denied.
Not for a rezoning, no.
Okay. It went before planning commission.
Planning commission, that's correct.
And the planning commission recommend approval.
I believe the planning commission recommended denial.
Denial, right, right. It was denied. And also, your staff is recommending that it be denied for conditional light industrial. Is that correct?
Right. The planning department's recommendation was to deny, recommending to deny the light industrial and recommended approval of a general mixed-use conditional.
Right. And under general mixed-use conditional, that would require a use permit.
For convenience stores if that was a proposed use, yes.
Right. Whereas, under the conditional light industrial, the applicant would not have to go through the use permit process.
Right. That would be permitted by right use.
Right. In a presentation you gave us probably about two weeks ago, we were talking about the use tables, you mentioned that for there to be a use permit requirement, that's usually because something is being impacted that that use permit is addressing. Can you explain what is being impacted to the extent that your department is requiring a use permit versus just going through conditional light industrial where the applicant would be circumventing a use permit process?
Okay, well, as far as, if we're talking about convenience stores in particular, the way the zoning ordinance has been structured and the way most properties that have been developed for convenience stores have been, and I want to describe, these are convenience stores with gas pumps. So, everybody understands that a convenience store itself is permitted by right. It's when you add a convenience store with gas pumps, what are more traditional called convenience store, that requires a use permit. Most of the districts of the city, the commercial, retail, general mixed-use type districts, that type of use requires a use permit so that, you know, any necessary mitigating measures can be applied through condition by city council, should it be deemed necessary to do so. And traditionally, again, the, almost all of the convenience stores we've seen have been in these districts in which it's a required use permit for a convenience store.
So, what is it that is being impacted that this use permit would be required versus just going without?
Right. So, generally, when we look at conditions, we look at each site independently. So, I mean, a use permit is site-specific in terms of how you go about reviewing it. We look at what is surrounding it. We look at traffic impacts. We look at issues related to whether it be screening, lighting. And bear in mind that those, there are requirements already in the zoning code that address those matters. This will be whether or not it was determined or suggested that you might need some additional, additional screening or additional restriction on something like lighting, that type of thing. So, usually, it's something, a condition that will go above and beyond the conditions that are already mandated by the zoning ordinance.
So, are there some traffic issues there that you thought would be necessary that a use permit addressed?
Right. And regardless of whether it goes through a use permit or not, we would, we do a traffic impact analysis. They can be required multiple times in a process, whether it be for the rezoning, for a use permit. There are both triggers in the code based on traffic generation, there's also triggers if the city engineer believes there's concerns out there in which he needs to take a more in-depth look at that. So, that would be, you know, obviously, taking a look at intersections, signalization, turning movements, access points, all of those things that go through the site plan review process.
And so, are there some screening or lighting issues there that the use permit would address that conditional would not?
Well, it could. I mean, city council could. Again, we have screening and lighting requirements in the code. Through the use permit process, if council desired, they could add additional.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I would like to say, ma'am, I find it highly problematic that this council has staff that makes recommendations based on research and regulations. And I find it troubling that we have the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Commission, and our planning department recommending denial. And then we have citizens from the community who are recommending it be denied. I have not heard one voice from the community recommending that it be approved. And so, I would think that we would listen to our departments, commissions, as well as our citizens on this issue. And I would think that, in good faith, for those who would be on council, who would be voting against this, considering that we have these three entities that have voted denial, that we should express our viewpoint and not just take a vote of yes or no, considering we haven't had anyone to come forward, other than the applicant recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
Thank you, mayor. I'll be the first one, Councilman Whitaker. But one thing I want to start off and say to Mr. Blunt, and I know you aren't real familiar with the protocol and the way things, but when you speak to an issue, you're talking to us down here. It's totally disrespectful for you to call out staff.
Mr. Mayor, just upon a order, I think he was already corrected by you and if Mr. Smith could just...
I have a right, I can do this.
Not try to sanction the speaker.
Yeah, let's talk to the issue, please.
Okay, I am, but I just had to get that out because it's just disrespectful.
Okay, well, let's talk to the issue.
And as far as the issues go, and to my council colleague, Councilman Whitaker, who's always prats himself on data and making decisions based on data, we have not been presented any, a lot of concerns have been brought up about safety, about flipping properties, about danger, about, then I heard explosions. And one thing that's the number one issue that I know I've had to wrestle with, and where the property is located. The property is located on the fringe of Portsmouth Acres. There's already heavy industrial traffic that navigates, that surrounds that property. When you come off Greenwood and you turn left or to the right, then you make another left and then you're going back into another heavy industrial area. That is already happening. That's been happening for years. And I talked with Mr. Willis in length about this. And my concern as for the community also is to be reasonably concerned for the applicant and the property owner. And this property has been vacant, I guess, for about 15 or so years. And to propose residential on a corner like that is very unsafe. And because you've brought it up, if you put a gas station there, a convenience store is unsafe. It would be worse to put residential, to build homes on that corner, other than if you put some kind of border or wall around Greenwood Drive and then a little ways down the street. I'm concerned about Portsmouth Acres and I think, and I stood with Portsmouth Acres way back on my previous period on council, because that would, that was a bigger impact on Portsmouth Acres. In my opinion, this is not a great impact on Portsmouth Acres as if it's being portrayed here. And there is no proof and there is no information that's been presented to us about crime, about... Of course, there's been some accidents at that intersection, but not to the point where that intersection is deemed one of the unsafe intersections in the city. I'm just concerned that a lot of, I mean, we've heard some comments that are going way over the top as far as what could happen. There's another catty corner, another convenience store with gas pumps and a gas station. There's the city pump station. There's commercial on that, in that intersection. Then there's a self-storage place on that corner. And then, once you turn the corner, there's an industrial park back there that, that traffic's not gonna go away. So, the only thing that is proper is some type of commercial or some type of egress and egress on Greenwood where you would just come in and go out and keep getting up to the interstate or going back on Greenwood. So, again, I feel that I have not heard any justification based on some of the claims, some of the issues, no data presented that any of that is gonna be detriment to Portsmouth Acres directly. And that's why I'm continuing to support it. Thank you.
Order, please. No, no. This council is considering the motion that's on the floor. This discussion is among city council. Let's direct our comments to each other. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mayor, may I have six seconds?
Sir, you're out of order. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, I would just like to remind council again that I think this is setting a dangerous precedent where we have Board of Zoning Appeal, Planning Commission, and our planning department denying and allowing an applicant to circumvent the process of use permit by going through another zoning request such as conditional light industrial. I think it's setting a precedent that if another applicant comes with the same request, it would be arbitrary if we did not follow the same practice.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simms.
Thank you, mayor. I remind us, us, my colleagues, that the reason that the applicant has asked for this type of zoning is so that he doesn't have to come back again for a use permit. Because this council, of which I have been a part for many years, has a long history of changing its mind between one reading and another, which has, in fact, happened with this particular issue. We went from yes to no to maybe to table to wherever we may end up tonight. So, I don't blame an investor for wanting to get it right or wrong the first time so that when they want to make a sale, which he's obviously been trying to do for some 15-plus years, the person making the purchase knows what they're gonna get. You know? I agree with Mr. Smith in that the area surrounding Portsmouth Acres has had commercial and light industrial and heavy industrial around it since I was a child, since long before I was ever on this city council. And while I empathize with Mr. Willis and the neighbors and we all want our neighborhoods to be safe, my responsibility is not just to Portsmouth Acres, but to the larger community of the citizens of Portsmouth, all 90-plus thousand of them. And so, if we can take a piece of property, or if there's an opportunity to take what is basically a little piece of non-performing property, sitting right by the interstate on a busy road where nobody in their right mind would ever build a house, and turn it into something that will pay six figures a year in taxes, then I think that's what should be done. And that's what I intend to do tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Thank you, mayor. We have Mr. John...
We have Mr. John Wright is here for questions. If you could come for to have a couple of questions, just to clear or to set the stage. You have owned the property for 15 years?
Since 2003.
Since 2003. And you have also developed some other properties in that same community?
I have. I developed a 13-lot, single-family subdivision that is up on Bedford and Airline.
Okay.
Called Bedford Place.
And currently, the lot that you have has been vacant for that entire time, and you pay taxes to the city in the estimate around...
About $1,200 a year.
Okay. And your anticipated development for the property is convenience store with pumps that would probably gross in the avenue of... Could you, you know, let us know, you know, what your...
The best we can determine with looking at other relatively new convenience stores in the city, they range anywhere from, depending on its location and quality of the structure, tax base or the assessment on those properties are anywhere from, I would say, the high $2 million to the low $4 million. So if you can take a piece of property that's worth $90,000, get it rezoned, put it to work, just the real estate taxes alone, we believe, will generate over $60,000 a year. That has nothing to do with the retail sales tax, the state gas tax that gets returned to the city, and things of that nature. We anticipate that that site, developed as a C-store, run properly, would generate in excess of $100,000 a year in revenue for the city of Portsmouth. And that's a difference of $1,200 a year. It's an economic gain.
Well, I commend you for being a businessman and wanting to develop in the city. I know that they are surrounding businesses in the area, and this would probably promote them to do more, to clean up their properties. I live in proximity in the Cavalier Manor section, and I see some of the business one mainly being right across the street from where you are. Maybe this would give them an opportunity to maybe clean up their property. And sometimes friendly competition breeds good business. So I commend you, and I'll be supporting you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion among council? Here are none. We're ready for the question. If you're in favor of the motion, which is to adopt, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 18283. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance?
An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $557,246 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund to provide funding to operate local probation and pretrial services in the city of Portsmouth.
So that we may consider this item, is there a motion to adopt?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
This brings us to item 18284, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. Would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend Section 10-105 of Chapter 10 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, to, as amended, to change the voting location for precinct number 22 from Forward Church to St. Mark's Deliverance Center, located at 3801 Turnpike Road, and to formally change the name of precinct number 22 to St. Mark's Deliverance Center.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which... Oh. Not yet. Councilman Smith?
That motion carries. Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18285, which is the consideration of an ordinance creating a creative communities partnership. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a creative communities partnership grant in the amount of $4,500 from the Virginia Commission for the Arts and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Museums.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion, which is to adopt?
Here are none. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 18286, which is the consideration of a certain ordinance to amend the city code. Will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 22 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, by amending Section 22-12 and adding a new Section 22-12.1 for the purpose of establishing regulations for parades and public assemblies.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded, and we do have one speaker. And that speaker is Mark Kadoguy Yatroski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, one last time, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, and fellow citizens. My intent in addressing this item is to ask for a deferral and a recharacterization of this item as a public hearing item. The code amendment addresses parades, public assemblies, and public expressions. So we're talking about something that will regulate the way in which citizens express their First Amendment rights. This has gone through a series of discussions, going back to your retreat in February. There have been presentations at at least two city council work sessions. But the nuts and bolts have not been discussed. The high level, the bullet points have been talked through, but there have not been... There has not been a plethora of real-world scenarios discussed. As you have in the zoning regulations, where you have a table of uses, it would be helpful to have a table of situations and show how the provisions of this particular ordinance would apply to them. Now, there is no imminent situation that makes it necessary for you to adopt it. You have no requests on the horizon, no known requests on the horizon, to have any of these types of public gatherings. So you do have time without the pressure of events weighing on you. And I think it would be good for the quality of the finished product to have a wider discussion, where the public comes in, and where you have that table of circumstances, so that people can see how this is going to play out. In going, in sitting through the briefings and looking at the city attorney's presentation, no alarm bells have gone off, but there is a nagging feeling that we're not addressing something. It's a feeling. I can't isolate it. With, again, without any urgency in this matter, I think we would be doing ourselves a favor to bring it into a public discussion and see if anything else comes out. Because getting it wrong will be costly for the city. We have had numerous suits over my tenure in Portsmouth that the city has not fared particularly well in. And when you're dealing with the First Amendment, which is attached to a lot of other issues, I think it would be in our best interests to ensure that we have it as watertight as possible. So for that reason, I'm asking you to defer this, recharacterize it as a public hearing, and take another look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes. In light of what the nation saw happen in Charlottesville, as some in those cities are changing their ordinances, and I would like, if there's no objection from council, if the city attorney could give us just a highlight or summary of how this ordinance has been changed in light of what occurred in Charlottesville.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any problems with that?
No.
How's the... You don't have any problems?
Just so that citizens could be educated on it.
Mr. City Attorney.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, just to correct a few things, I believe this discussion goes back to as early as maybe October of last year. It was before your retreat where we began this discussion. In light of some of the issues around Charlottesville, the city convened relevant departments, the police department, Parks and Rec, the planning department that typically handles special events. We incorporated the recommendations of the Governor's Task Force on Civil Disruption and Civil Disturbances, which, again, was a result of the Charlottesville incidents. We have incorporated a process whereby we are honoring the First Amendment rights of the citizens of Portsmouth, and at the same time, giving them as quick as possible an opportunity to express themselves in the city in a manner that is appropriate and takes into consideration the safety and the health of individuals. So I will tell you, in large part, the original ordinances that we had in place could require up to 45 days to approve a special event parade or a expression. We came to the conclusion that that was entirely too long because of individuals' First Amendment rights. If you have an incident that you want to speak to, it was not appropriate to extend your time period for 45 days in order to get city approval. We have discussed the relevancy of time, as well as the needs and the standards that will be applied across the board for all individuals, so that the city will not unnecessarily be saddled with any charge of being arbitrary or somehow misapplying the law to an individual based on viewpoint. And so we've streamlined the process. We've had the considerations in the cool of the day, which is best, so that we will not be accused of being arbitrary, dependent upon the next person who seeks to have a First Amendment expression or parade here in the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. In this ordinance, actually, there's a lot in it that protects those who would be expressing their First Amendment rights. I think that was a main consideration to defer this, based on someone saying they don't know what's missing, they just have an inkling, I think would not be good for the citizens' First Amendment rights that could be subject to being assaulted and other things that we've seen happen on the media. So I'm going to vote to support it.
Any further discussion on, Dr. Whitaker?
Right. Just want to make sure. There was no mention to defer anything. I just wanted to educate the citizens on what this was about.
Correct. Any further discussion on the question? Ready for the question? All in favor of the adoption of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And that motion carries, which brings us to item 18287, which is the consideration of adoption of another ordinance. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a burn justice assistance grant in the amount of $79,830 from the United States Department of Justice and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, which is to adopt, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 18288. Would you read the caption of that ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing a real estate tax overpayment refund to Dorothy S. Hudson.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made to adopt, and it's been seconded. Any discussion by council? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 18289, which is the consideration of an ordinance accepting certain grant funds. Will you read the caption of the ordinance, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting additional funding in the amount of $299,155 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2019 Social Services Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to address the increased volume of Medicaid applications anticipated as a result of the Medicaid expansion.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt? Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion that's been made to approve, adopt the ordinance. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to 18290, which is the consideration of another ordinance. And would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to establish a new project in the FY 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Program titled Frederick Airline Pedestrian Improvements, accepting certain bicycle and pedestrian safety program funding approved by the Virginia Department of Transportation for the said project, and amend the FY 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Program accordingly.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made to adopt the ordinance, it's been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Would you read the caption of the ordinance for item 18291, which is our next item on the agenda, which is to approve a certain ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to accept certain revenue sharing, state of good repair, and specialized state and federal, state and federal bond funding approved by the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Paradise Creek Victory Boulevard Bridge Project, and to amend the FY 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Program accordingly.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion to adopt this ordinance, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. We're at item 18292, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain resolution. And would you read the caption of that resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing and supporting submission of a application for participation in the Virginia Department of Transportation Economic Development Access Program.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt... We have a motion to adopt the resolution and it's been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please vote yes. Opposed? No. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
And we're at Item 18293, which will require a motion. And will you read the caption of this matter, please? Madam Clerk?
Sure. Yes, sir. Adoption of a motion to accept a donation from Spike's K-9 to supply the Portsmouth Police Department's K-9 unit with a training bite suit.
Is there such a motion to accept?
Motion to accept donation? Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Please vote yes. Opposed? No. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries, which brings us to new business, 18294, Boards and Commissions. And Councilman Moody, you have two motions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have two reappointments. I'll read those first. And then, we have one appointment to consider.
Okay.
Reappointments to the Community Criminal Justice Board, Amanda Winchester, and Parks and Recreation Commission, Ashley Starling.
And that is your motion to reappoint?
That's my motion to reappoint.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this motion? All in favor of the motion? Please vote yes. Opposed? No. And your second motion?
A move that we appoint C. Ross Morgan to the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and we're ready for discussion. The Chair recognizes Dr. Woodaker.
Yes, I'm going to be voting against the appointment of C. Ross Morgan to Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority because of the past issues dealing with appointing persons who are part of banks on boards that deal significantly with contracts, and in particular, in this case, one who's actually over a division of the bank that deals with construction loans and the significant issues that PRHA will be having in the future with the redevelopment of the different housing communities. And so, the appearance of that is not proper. And so, I'm going to be voting against this because this was something that previous councils had discussed. And also, we've seen across the region where you have members, particularly of this bank, Town Bank, who have stepped off of boards because of such conflicts.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. As most of these council members know, and some of the public, many times, we need people with financial backgrounds. In fact, there have been many bankers who've served on this council. And just like business, people who serve on a board or a commission, or even on council, when a potential issue of conflict comes up, they recuse themselves. That's a public process. So, if we begin eliminating people with financial backgrounds, what's next? People with business backgrounds? People who might own some real estate? Even real estate realtors? And the list goes on. You know, we have a system that protects citizens. In fact, we're required, I think, twice a year to fill out a disclosure form on where our interests are. Those forms are available to the public. They're filed with the state. And there's pretty stiff penalties for falsifying those forms. And we all know what can happen when you falsify something. So, I'm going to support that. And in fact, Town Bank is headquartered here in the city of Portsmouth. And they've served this city and other cities extremely well with their talent. And I know of no employee or no officer of Town Bank, or actually, any other bank that's served in the city of Portsmouth that's violated nondisclosure or conflict of interest. So, I will be supporting this, Mayor.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Dr. Woodaker.
Yes, just want to make sure that I'm clear that as far as eliminating all persons with financial backgrounds or real estate backgrounds, that was not the issue. The issue was pertaining to appointing persons to boards who deal with contracts where there may be access to information. And I think, as I said before, we've already seen it across the region where you've had persons who have stepped aside because of such reasons.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, too, have a concern. And it's not in bankers in general. It's just, I think this particular bank has already have done and doing business with the Housing Authority. So, there's other banks in the city. There's other financial folks in the city. So, I'm going to oppose it also.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the question? Please vote yes. Opposed? No. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries, which brings us to Item 18295, item submitted by council members. The Chair recognizes the Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Simmons, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to try to get through this without coughing in everybody's face. I want to remind everybody that Sunset Thursdays continue to be ahead. And this Thursday, if the rain ever stops, we will hear Island Boy at High Street Landing. Those concerts are free and open to the public from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. every Thursday through September the 6th. If the weather is like it's been today and or is forecast, if the event is to be canceled, it will be done so by 5:00. It will be on all the normal Facebook, social media, eBlasts, and news stations. Coming up, before we meet again on April the 4th, I mean, August the 4th, the Coast Guard will celebrate its birthday and begin the day with a run walk out of the Union Bank and Trust Pavilion here in downtown Portsmouth that begins at 7:00 in the morning. And later that afternoon, beginning at 3:30 at High Street Landing on that Saturday, August 4th. And again, on Sunday, August 5th, we will have the 32nd Annual Gospel Rama Concerts, again, free and open to the public from 3:30 p.m. into the evening, Saturday and Sunday, August 4th and 5th. And that's it.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Even though we're not even a month past the current budget that we recently adopted, we'll soon be beginning work on a new budget. And I don't think it's too soon to start expressing ideas. A few of mine is the school budget and the funding mechanism. I would, and tonight, I'm just planting some seeds. I'm not asking for any consensus at this point. But one of the things that I will be interested in is a funding formula based on performance from both entities, financially from the city, scholastically from the school system. Details to be forthcoming. The other thing is, we have a jewel in this city. It goes by the name City Park. All of us are familiar with it. It's probably the most underused park in our city at different times. I've been out there numerous times this year, taken pictures that I've shared with my colleagues. And the park is in a sad state of affairs when it could become a jewel. I think we're missing an extreme opportunity there as we look to bring more visitors to our city, have more functions. I think we need to explore a renovation of City Park, if you may. The other thing, and prior to this meeting, I did share it with the mayor. And in fact, I submitted it online that all of our citizens can. And that's preparation for our legislative packages, both our General Assembly and our federal delegation. My idea is to correct some geography. Following the Civil War, our shipyard was, well, actually, during the Civil War, our shipyard was burnt to the ground by the Union forces. And if that wasn't bad enough, when it was rebuilt, it became the Norfolk Navy Shipyard. We all know where it's located. It's located in Portsmouth, not unlike the Toward Community College up until it moved to Portsmouth was located in Suffolk. But the shipyard is a source of extreme pride. And the shipyard that carries the name Portsmouth is actually not located in Portsmouth, Rhode Island. It's located in Kidderly, Maine. And there is precedence for government to change the names of government facilities, this case being the Navy. In fact, NASA, back years ago, Cape Kennedy, which was renamed in honor of President Kennedy. The residents felt that that was an important industry. It was also the name of their community. So, they lobbied the federal government to change the name back to Cape Canaveral. So, I want us to explore the process of petitioning the Navy, the federal government, to change the name of our shipyard back to its rightful name, and that's the Portsmouth Shipyard of Virginia. So, I submitted that in our federal legislative package. And I would like to see our federal delegation support it and go forth. There's two things that can happen. They can deny it, or they can approve it. And I'm hoping that we can get it approved. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like I shared in our work session, and I feel that should be shared here to the public, council meeting, Councilwoman Lucas and myself had the privilege and experience of taking a tour and visiting the Kelby Water Treatment System. And we were very proud of what we saw and very impressed with what we saw. And it goes to speak for the reason that Portsmouth Water is probably the best in the state of Virginia. Those persons that are responsible for running that plant out there, even after some difficulties experienced on past storms, have made some improvements, and the city has, I would say, to make sure that something like that doesn't happen again. And that's where the part of it was flooded because it was down on a low part near the lake. They've made some improvements to correct that. But the bottom line here is that the employees that run that place, we, two at all, aspects of it, should be commended for the job that they do. It's a 24/7 operation. And the processes that they go through, taking that water from the lakes out there, and the processes that they go through to get it to your house, is just amazing and awesome. And even the plans, they're even looking in the future because of the technology and certain impurities that the normal process don't take care of. They've retrofitted the plant to use ultraviolet light to continue to get more impurities. So, I just wanted to speak to them, I think it's Superintendent Ricks, who's in charge. They do a fantastic job of getting crystal clear, clean water to you each and every day, 24/7, 365 days a year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Dr. Woodaker.
Yes, just to echo Councilman Moody, I, too, am in agreement that we should have some discussion on the school funding. The difference is that I hope we would consider revenue sharing type of funding versus it being based on some type of merit of the school system's performance, particularly when many of those indicators of performance are driven by a major issue that we're dealing with or attempting to deal with, and not is poverty. And I think when we look at that as a cause, it would be fair for us to look more at a revenue sharing type of program. So, I would be looking forward to that discussion.
Thank you, sir. All right. Which brings us to non-agenda speakers. And our first speaker that signed up was Marquise Hunt, but I understand he does not want to speak. And so, we'll go to our next speaker, Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. At last night's work session, there was a presentation about the Crawford Gateway Revitalization Strategy Update. Let's review the history of this strategy. At the City Council Retreat in Wakefield in February 2nd and 3rd, the agenda included four big things: education, image, become a smart city, and the Crawford Gateway Revitalization Strategy to maximize the waterfront's assets. On February the 15th, there was a review in the City Council chambers from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That night, the Old Town Civic League met. This review did not include the people who would be most affected by this demolition of the waterfront property. On January the 23rd, there was a municipal facilities assessment overview given by James Reif, the engineer. This overview included four waterfront assets. 801 Water Street, the building is 35 years old and is used for the police administration. The cost to repair the significant issue is $8 million. This building was purchased for $2.8 million with a tax base of $3 million, which the city took $40,000 a year of real estate tax revenue off the tax rolls. The second one, 801 Crawford Street, this building is also 35 years old and has significant issues for repair. The repair cost is $7 million. The third one, Portsmouth Pavilion, is 16 years old. It has significant issues that will cost $350,000 to repair. The fourth one, the former Civic Center, is 50 years old. The city jail and police records are housed in it. The jail has issues that will cost $64 million to relocate and $8 million to demolish the Civic Center. On Monday, May the 7th, there was a presentation regarding the Crawford Gateway Revitalization Strategy. In that presentation, five projects and their costs were listed. I've included the May 7th cost, along with last night's cost per project. The first one states that the future city hall space needs evaluation. The task order is with Clark Nelson for over $39,000 with an estimate of $75,000. The second one states that the Civic Center land use study has a final draft under staff review. The real estate market is based on multifamily residential use. The analysis of jail operating costs and the estimate of potential economic impact is being reviewed. The task order with Clark Nelson is The task order with Clark Nelson is over $47,000 with additional analysis costing over $8,000 with a total estimate of $75,000. The third one is the Crawford Street Corridor Study. The consultant has set up a project template study for a year. It is from the roundabout to Effingham Street. On May the 7th, the cost by Volkert was over $75,000 for this study. Last night, on the slide page 5, it reports the cost is $190,000. The difference in cost is over $115,000 for the Crawford Street Corridor Study. The fourth one is the site selection and preliminary engineering for the public safety complex. The preliminary site analysis is complete. The site selection and confirmation is required now. The study to remove the municipal presence from the waterfront was estimated at $125,000. Now the cost is less with $55,000. Is the Stormwater Park is number five, it is located in the Civic Center parking lot. The task orders with WSP for over $82,000 with an estimate of $150,000, which will include grant applications. Concepts are complete. The cost remains at $82,000. The total project cost total reads over $368 million for four projects. The cost for the fifth project covers the jail. It will cost $64 million for the jail to be relocated, $8 million to be demolished. I am very concerned about the lack of comprehensive information given to the people by this presentation. We, the people, do not give our consent to destroy our waterfront for an image that is not historical. We are not Norfolk, we are not Virginia Beach, we are not Hampton or New Bernews. We have our own identity that has been covered up for years, buried under a mask of shame. The five projects are the mask of shame to distract us from our real...
Ma'am, your time is up.
Yes, sir. It is up.
The next speaker is Michael Owens, and sir, you have five minutes.
If you can't tell, I can hear the buzzer. Too soon. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Michael Owens. I'm here tonight with my sister to plead for a request of consideration and assistance of this council to resolve real estate tax matter. In December of 2017, our Uncle Johnny Owens advised he had found property that was listed in our deceased father's name, Alva A. Owens, Jr. Pepe Owens, as our father was known, was a longtime supporter, volunteer, and participant of this council. Among his numerous achievements were to have Scott's Creek renamed Owens Creek and the commissioning of Owens Park in the West Park View section of the city in honor of our family's longstanding heritage and history in this city. Around January 10th, I went to the city assessor office and spoke to Mrs. Andrea Gardner. She researched the North Street property and produced a list of heirs which had our father listed as the current owner. Mrs. Gardner also informed me that the personal property taxes had not been paid in the four years since our father's passing. Mrs. Gardner then called someone in the treasurer's office who informed us that the property was scheduled to go up for public auction sometime in February. She then instructed me on the process to have the property put in our names and made it very clear that we needed to hurry up before losing this opportunity. On January 22nd, I went to the city probate office with our father's death certificate and the list of heirs provided by Mrs. Gardner. The deputy clerk researched the records and found for our father and found there was no last will and testament on file in his name in this city. After making the $42 payment, the deputy clerk provided me with a memorandum of facts for probate. Another $44 payment provided the real estate affidavit and probate information form. These three documents declared that my sister and I are the property owners of 1608 North Street with full power of sale over the property. On February 1st, 2018, I went to the treasurer's office with all the documentation provided by the probate clerk and city assessor. The $2,133.49 in past due taxes on the property was paid in full. I then went back to the city assessor's office with the receipt and other documents, which time Mrs. Gardner entered this information into the system and provided a new list of heirs, now naming my sister and I as the legal property owners. In the two months following, my sister and I spent a considerable amount of money and time cleaning up the vacant lot and advertising its sale. On April 24th, 2018, my sister and I entered into a good faith contract of sale on the property. My sister and I then arranged to use the services of real estate attorney James Backus to close on this property. We received a bill for the third quarter real estate taxes at that same time, which we then paid in the amount of $142.71. Within three to four days, we received a call from the prospective buyer informing us that his title search revealed that the property did not belong to us, but to our father's ex-wife, Morna Owens. The following week, around May 1st, we contacted Mrs. Andrea Gardner, again informed her the recent findings, at which time she requested time to look into the matter. Two days later, Mrs. Gardner called to inform us that there had been an error made somewhere within the city offices. She discovered that quick claim deeds filed in 2002 by our father's attorney had not been properly executed and/or filed. On that day, once this error was discovered, it was immediately corrected. My sister spent the next two weeks calling various city offices pleading for clarification and inquiring about having our monies returned. On May 22nd, a letter of explanation and all aforementioned documentation was faxed to Mrs. Martha Walton in the city treasurer's office. A week later, on May 30th, a call was made to Mrs. Walton to inquire the status. The call went unanswered, and a message was left on her voicemail. A week later, on June 5th, a second call was made to Mrs. Walton to inquire the status. Again, the call went unanswered, and a voicemail was left on her voicemail. On June 11th, 2018, we received a call from Mr. Lillande in the treasurer's office to inform us that the treasurer, Mr. Paige Cherry, had refused to return our monies citing that anyone can make payments on anyone else's property. Between June 2nd and July 11th of this year, there were approximately 12 separate calls made by my sister to both the treasurer's and the assessor's office pleading clarification and answers on this issue. On July 11th, the city assessor, Mr. Billy Butt, stated that he would personally send all the documentation and notes to the city attorney's office for consideration. Yesterday, in a follow-up conversation with Mr. Butt concerning the city attorney's findings, we were instructed that it would take another two weeks to get an answer. In closing, we have learned through our research and findings that there was an error made back in 2002 in which the quick claim title transfer for the undeveloped land located at 1608 North Street was never properly recorded by the city of Portsmouth. Due to this filing error, my sister and I were wrongfully informed by city officials that this property was our legal inheritance. Subsequently, my sister and I have paid $2,362 in back taxes and fees for property we later discovered was not ours. This figure does not include the time and money invested in cleaning the property, advertising its sale, and legal advice. We have been given the runaround by the various city officials we've contacted regarding this matter. We are only asking that this council consider the facts in this case and return the monies my sister and I have paid to the city of Portsmouth due to an error which its appointed officials admit was their own. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is John Lifcy, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Lifcy. I currently reside at 229 Mount Vernon in what is presently historic Port Norfolk. I am currently vice president of the Civic League, but I am here speaking for myself, not for the Civic League. I'm also a past member of HPC. I served two, three-year terms. My second term ended approximately a year and a half ago. Two years ago, the owner of 101 Mount Vernon was cited for installing windows without a permit and for not having HPC approval. A stop work order was issued by the city. New windows at that time had already been installed but were not trimmed out. The owner submitted an application to HPC, asking for forgiveness, obviously, and not for permission. The application was turned down due to the windows being vinyl, which are not allowed in Port Norfolk. The owner stated that he understood the guidelines and that he intended to install proper windows. HPC then voted to approve the installation of proper windows after he stated that that's what he intended to do. Several months went by with no progress on the house. Then contractors appeared and trimmed out the existing inappropriate windows. After that, the owner appealed the HPC ruling, which he had previously agreed to. The design guidelines for Port Norfolk are clear somewhat. I'm reading from page 45 of the Port Norfolk Design Guidelines. Aluminum or vinyl clad wood windows and fiberglass windows require approval of the Historic Preservation Commission, and vinyl windows are not allowed in the district, period. There's no comma there, it's a period. It doesn't say vinyl windows are allowed if somebody thinks they look good. It says vinyl windows are not allowed, period. Now, these same guidelines muddy the waters, because on page 91 in the approval matrix under windows, it does say that vinyl windows can be approved by Historic Preservation Commission review and approval. HPC has never approved vinyl windows. We've always followed page 45, vinyl windows are not allowed. We know that if we say yes one time, precedent is set, and we can no longer say no. City councils solve that problem. You said yes. So how can a no now be taken? It will not hold water. You have set the precedent on vinyl windows. I know that the city attorney has said that HPC can continue to deny vinyl windows, but I believe that any lawyer will have a field day with that. What denial would be defensible after 101 Mount Vernon was approved because they look good? Windows are one of the biggest issues we have in our neighborhood. The historic district is a constant battle. And page 45, again, reading from that, windows are one of the major characteristic, character defining features on most buildings. Without proper windows, historic homes lose much of their character. HPC members are volunteers. They're citizens, they follow the guidelines, but they're also fair. I would ask that you support them when they issue proper rulings. I don't know where this will leave Port Norfolk. To me, it is now an open season on windows, and vinyl windows can go in any house now. We're very proud of our neighborhood, we work hard to maintain it. We love our neighborhood. You folks did us no favor when you voted to allow vinyl windows. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have no further business, and this meeting is adjourned.